Firemen, those are tough.
Tough.
Real hard to get to the roof. What size bill you're gonna put up there?
It's labeled? It is not labeled, but I will get that information, make sure it's on the next submission.
Yeah, I mean, as big as you can.
I want to say, I thought, I read in an email, four by four.
Okay.
But I'll.
The biggest you can get up there, because you've ever seen a guy my size in turnout gear with an SCBA on and a bunch of tools try to get through one of those things before?
Right, which we, and plus for equipment, you know, it brings tools in and out, so we'll make it as big as we can, of course.
Before we go to Natalie and Phil, does the board have any comments?
I think it's fairly straightforward.
How much of this is visible from Route 6?
The whole thing.
Yeah, but I mean, when you're talking about the roof.
I don't think you could.
Oh, so you're, we're finished floor, we're probably at around six. It's like, yeah, so this is actually the highest point of the site right now, so it's, it sits up high. You will see this building from Route 6 and 17, that's why they want to be here, but you won't see.
See the building, I think, though.
Yeah, but you won't see anything on top.
You're not looking down, or it's above six.
It's way up, way up. So the fly, so the flyover. So the flyover, you'll be, you know, well below it. This, matter of fact, this portion of the site is above the flyover, you know, right now. 608, yeah, that's what I thought.
So this is the only style Marriott Courtyard they have, huh? And I, I'm trying to be nice, because I don't want to insult any architects or designers like that. You did a very nice job with the rest of your project. And then there's this. Somewhat similar. So that was their compromise?
Right, so if you look, if you look at, right, if you look at the SP1, so that's the Hardy plank, or the vertical, but it's a vertical pattern.
Right.
So all, so they get these darker panels. So this.
I just maybe having a hard time wrapping my head around it, because there's stone and col, and like, so much other natural materials. Would you be able to get a sample of this for the public hearing?
It happens to be that this color, which is the main color, is also in Building 7 and 8.
Right.
This, this ephesus. This is Building 7 and 8.
Right.
And this panel is also obvious.
So, for the, for the public hearing, could you get an actual storyboard of like, what the materials, the actual materials will look like? Because I, sometimes when they get printed on the renderings and stuff, they don't, they don't really match what.
So we, we, and what Aaron said, so the main, the main ephesus face, you know, the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
The EF1, you know, we tried to match that up, EF1 and then the, the wood, the wood colors for the WD1 and WD2. We tried to match those up with 7 and 8.
Okay.
And then also introduced on some of these panels, it's, this is not the correct green by any means, but it's more like an olive green, so.
Yeah, I think that's why maybe if you could get the actual. Yeah, whatever the, if, if you can make this into a storyboard with the actual, you know, we go back and forth, sometimes we take this when it's close, but I think for this type of a project and the mass, now it'd be good to actually see what it's gonna look like.
I agree with Chris too, Chris has a good point. The other, the rest of the site is so well done and broken down in a scale that's, you know, breaks down in larger buildings. I understand that, you know, of course, this is corporate design and a certain look, but it's. But, you know, there is a way to capture some of that, which is sort of more similar to the rest of the site.
Yeah, that's why I want to see the actual, maybe it'll grow on me a little bit more when I see the. Other questions or concerns or comments right now? No? Okay, Natalie?
Sure. Our memo notes minor revisions are required to the ARB form and the plan materials for consistency. We've requested confirmation from the applicant that they intend to use non-reflective windows. Your last meeting, there was some discussion about dumpster enclosures, and the board opined that they should match the building materials for which they're associated with, so the applicant should provide some additional information on that for you to consider. Mr. Esposito already discussed the wall signs, so where two are proposed and one is permitted, they're gonna be removing the second sign, so one sign should be complying. Although they should still provide additional information on the size of the signs. You know, presumably it would comply based on the wall area of the hotel, but all that information should be provided to confirm. We discuss in the rest of our memo, conditions of your prior action and also the seeker finding statement pertaining to this application. Some of these were resolved during your last meeting. Some of these require a response from the applicant to confirm compliance. As mentioned at your last meeting, the seeker recommendations recommend that the planning board consider peaked roofs with dormers, large front windows with overhangs, natural colors and varying facade materials. So unless the board takes any exception to the applicant's proposal, we would presume that it's complying with that finding. We also, or Steve also discussed the extension of the stairs and how that didn't comply with the code and came up with an alternative that may be complying, so we'll look at that on the applicant's next submission. And look for the material or the information that you requested as well, Chris. And otherwise, we also just wanted to raise that the other applications for ARB on this site are proposed for public hearing on April 5th, so the board can make a decision on, you know, whether a public hearing is required for this application and also, and/or schedule it as needed. Otherwise, we defer to counsel on seeker and GML.
Questions for Natalie? No?
Nope.
Okay, Phil?
Our memo is from March 10th, just a few cleanup items in terms of traffic control. At the south side of the building, there's a set of doorways there against each crosswalk. Hand it to the plans at that point, because the building is very close to the drive aisle. And then, the positioning of the building, where the north-south roadway in front of the building and the east-west roadway on the south side of the building, that should be all, an all-way stop intersection, because the building is very close to the road and the sight lines would be restricted, so we want to see that as an all-way stop. Other, just some cleanup items. And then the question on the court, the back garden area. What is the treatment of that wall that's back there? Is it a solid wall, Steve, or?
Basering wall.
Basering wall.
Maybe basering wall with, with, with the air.
Okay. The other comment that we had was relative to the land bank parking, and we weren't clear whether there was still any proposal for that. We've been advised that there is no longer any land bank parking. And subsequent to our memo, the applicant's engineer had submitted a, an updated parking summary plan indicating that they would, they weren't gonna land bank any spaces, and that it would be adequate. The other component, and again, this is not specific to Building 9, was we had requested kind of a phasing construction plan. Make sure, because this site was designed with a shared parking overlap between buildings. How that would be phased, so that if one building lagged behind, we'd be adequate parking on the site, so. They have presented that, we haven't reviewed it yet, but it appears that it's reasonable, and we'll get into that in more detail.
So in layman's terms, that's to always make sure there's enough parking, regardless of how many of the buildings are built out, to meet what's there?
Correct.
Okay. We have questions for Phil? No? No? Hey, Kelly?
No.
No? All quiet.
I mean, I can, I can, I'm a lawyer, I can talk.
You can opine, I know you could if, if we, off the hip. So, other than storyboard, which the board has asked for, is anything else we want to see?
I think it's relative, as far as me, I just want to see that the materials are true color. And I know you might not like this architecture, but I would love to see if you could, you know, maybe look at the score or materiality and work on that. That's just my personal.
Or, they have to, maybe, does Marriott maybe have some literature or design standards that you could present to the board that say this is there?
Yeah, so like we did with BMW?
I don't think they were there for. So if there's a design standard that you can say, like, this is what they have approved, then? Okay, if you could give that to.
They already compromised on the site. They already compromised on the site.
No, I know, it's just, it is, I don't think anybody realizes, on top of that hill, oh, 55 or whatever, I'm not holding, don't hold me to the height, I don't have it memorized. This building is going to be, probably be one of the most visible things in Woodbury. And like I said before, we got little chance to make sure it looks and it fits in with the rest of there, and they've done such a nice job. Wow. Okay.
Appreciate it.
You said Buildings 7 and 8 have the same materials? Okay, so can I give, can I give you one small, one small ask? 7 and 8 and this building, a storyboard? So you're going to Michael's, you're gonna get some O tag? I think Steve knows what we're looking for, right? You've, you've done it first before. Be honest, tell them we're giving you a hard time, so, I mean, put the onus, put the onus on us that, you know, you know, it's, it's not that we don't like the project, it's just given the whole site, it just kind of sticks out a little bit. Good for this? Think we're okay to schedule a public hearing for the 5th with the rest of them? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm looking at the sheet number C10, the Ed Site Plan. I'm looking at the north, where the, where the road is 25 feet. And I'm looking at the trash. Is that sticking out, or is that just a concrete pad here?
I think it's a concrete pad with a gate.
So it's not sticking out, like?
No, 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 so that's, that's ungraded, so the wheels come up into the, to 70 and 80.
Okay, and then my other question to Natalie is, I'm looking at the, the transformer has ballots around it, but the generator does not. What's best practice? Do we normally, if we have a huge generator next to the road, is it a best practice to put ballots there as well, or it's not?
I'm not looking at the plan, and I don't have it with me, actually, I separated all of the materials, but we can review that, and also now the applicant knows that you're asking about it as well and can consider that in their next submission.
Yeah, because it's in the snow, I think it's at the snow storage area too, right? So you get a road plow driver. I probably behooves them, you know, a $30,000 generator, you don't want somebody. Something nice, not yellow. All right, so, motion on the table to schedule a public hearing for the 5th. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I do have one additional item, they did, I know there was, there was conversations at the last time they were, they were before us, that they were going to just go like with the regular poly sign, because they would need the variance to put the stonework around it. They've since changed their mind, they want to go and continue with the stonework. So we're gonna make a motion to refer them to the ZBA for whatever relief they need for the, this is for the big sign out front.
Out front.
Yeah. Second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If you can, you can, I mean, otherwise, we'll see you on the, we'll see you on the 5th for everything. Thank you. Have a good night, gentlemen. Have a good night, no problem. You're welcome. Get home safe. All right, boardwork still aren't done? Local law number one, review and discuss referral introductory local law number one of 2023 entitled Local Law, creating Chapter 255, short-term rentals of the code of the Village of Woodbury. I'll turn this over to Natalie and Kelly.
Before Natalie goes into her memo, I, I will be taking detailed notes for whatever the board wants. I know this is a, a very big local law for the board, is a very big local law for the Board of Trustees as well, and, and we are watching some state legislature that's proposed as well. The state is considering legislature itself to regulate the short-term rentals, the Airbnbs, the Verbos, whatever you want to call it. They're considering that as well, so we are keeping a close eye on all of that, and from a lot of the laws that have been adopted around the state, not just this county, there's also been a number of challenges. And challenges in drafting the law, and then legal challenges to the laws that have been adopted, so a lot of that is tried to be incorporated into here, basically the lessons learned. There was a recent court case that came down this summer, so a lot of this is crafted in a way to respond to the concerns of the court in that instance. But Natalie gave you a detailed memo, and so I'm gonna just sit back, take a lot of notes, and get ready to write your report to the board.
So, with that, Woodbury doesn't have a right to enter law. And my understanding of the building code and speaking of the code enforcement officer, anything that's on the internet can't be used as proof that a building is being used as an Airbnb. So, unless someone turns themselves in, or there is an emergency that the fire department gains access to the building, and holds that access to the code enforcement officer can get there and validate that it is hence being used as an Airbnb. While the local law is good, and I understand the need for the local law and the regulation of these, in theory, or in practicality, how about that, in theory, everything works, in practicality, how is it actually enforced?
So I think Natalie actually had a suggestion for that, about some people, it is difficult, I will say, in my experience for enforcing against Airbnbs, primarily because, you know, people may rent them out for the weekend, and the building department's closed on the weekend, so by the time the building department or the police or whomever go out to the property, those people aren't there anymore, and the owner's back, or something like that, so it does become an issue. I think Natalie suggested a revision to the law where advertising on one of those websites itself can be deemed proof that it's being used as such. That's something that we have to consider in her comments, and I have to do some further research on it.
Because that's, that's why I, what I was gonna ask, because my understanding as of now is that advertising isn't, wouldn't, would be get, my conversation with the code enforcement officer would say, here, here's a, here's a Zillow listing. It's clearly being used as an SRO.
And based on that, no.
Right, so here's a, you know, a verbo listing. I could tell you it's where the house is, it's in my neighborhood, I can say that's the house, but the code enforcement officer, as of now, says, there's nothing I can do about it unless I can get into the building and I can.
Unless he has probable cause or an administrative search warrant, yes. If he believes that it is being misused and he has some sort of proof of that, he doesn't rely on that, but he sees, I, I don't know, so other people like coming and going every weekend, maybe he would consider that as probable cause. We would likely get an administrative search warrant, but right now, they are completely not permitted in the village. Right now, you permit regular bed and breakfasts, not air bed and breakfasts, you know, they have to be owner occupied. So this law is trying to regulate the additional use that currently is not permitted, so there are gonna need to be modifications like that to actually say, here's, here's proof that it's being used as such, and to relate it back to the advertising, but I do have to look into that to see if the court actually weighed in on that particular element.
Would, would this be also maybe a good place to write in that right-of-entry law?
For this particular use?
For this particular use. I'm not saying go with the global right-of-entry, but at least for this particular use, incorporating in that right-of-entry.
Yeah, that is a good suggestion, and I will take that down.
Sorry, I, I, I know there's a lot, because, yeah, I took a couple of classes that they had a couple, and then there's a lot of in limbo back and forth state right now with this.
I, I will tell you that this is not even close to my first draft. Based on when I had first started writing it, there was a case, and another case, and then a big case came down, and now the state's proposing legislate, legislate? Yeah, statutes on it, and I'm like, you know, why am I wasting my time right now? I just want to be able to say, stay consistent, and then I can advise you, but I have to update it each time a new court case comes down, because I don't want you to be in violation of the Commerce Clause or the dormant Commerce Clause. Thing is that you don't hear in everyday conversation, and you probably haven't talked about in 20 years, that, you know, dormant Commerce Clause, you don't bring that up at the dinner table, but I need to make sure, but you will now. But I need to make sure that whatever is proposed doesn't violate that, so these are the suggestions I want, especially from an enforcement standpoint, to make sure that it has the teeth that the village needs, but I need to make sure that the court says that that's okay.
Is that village law that they can't use advertising, or is that state law?
My understanding is it's from state-passed court cases and the local judges.
Case law, yeah.
Case law, that was the word.
Case law, but, but there are instances when you, you can enter, and so unless it's specifically set forth therein, or, like I said, you have probable cause, there's criminal activity or something like that, or you have an administrative search warrant, which he will sometimes get, or if you're invited onto the property, I mean, there are limited instances where he can go in, but for something like this, that is such a hot topic, I think we want a clear direction for the building inspector.
And that's why we're trying to incorporate.
In the ultimate wisdom of New York State, if I advertise my house as a BRBL, they cannot enforce that, even though I'm admitting it in advertising, that's what I'm doing, or a short-term.
Well, it goes back to that old Craigslist thing, where the guy sold somebody else's house, but that person was then considered a bona fide purchaser, because they did it in good faith, and then that other person lost their house. So there's a lot of things out there that people do on the internet, so.
That's why I'd like to see a right-of-entry, at least for this. I know people find right-of-entry laws very over, overbearing, giving the building inspector that much more.
Off-aid.
But strictly from, and I'm gonna use my 20 years in the fire service, going into buildings that have either been converted or have multiple people in them, that you're not expecting to see.
You got 18 rooms and a basement.
Not even that, but, you know, they, they, you know, they put two beds in every bedroom, they. It's not what you're expecting. You, you, in a life safety issue, just look what just happened in Rockland. You had five people lose their lives.
Yeah.
And I, I don't want to be the next village to make that.
I agree.
Make the headline, so my real suggestion here would be incorporating the right-of-entry for the building department.
I'm good with that.
To, to give this a little bit more.
We have required knocksparks.
This is how private residences.
Yeah, and, and, but it's the same.
You know what, I, I haven't met a residential door, I haven't been able to get through.
Exactly.
I don't, I, because they usually typically own a deadbolt in a, in a pasture lot. You're not gonna, a knockstalker won't help, help you here, I mean, listen, I had a front door that had 27 three-inch nails put through, because they just didn't want you getting through the door, I mean, they'll, they'll do that, but I think in residential structure, you know, good, good old stern kick usually gets you through. Like, is it, my, my main concern is identifying and getting in, and making sure that the exits aren't blocked, the smoke detectors are working, the CO detectors are working, and that, you know what, these people can get out, God forbid something happens there.
So, one really good point that Natalie just pointed out to me, that I pointed out was her, that she just pointed out was me. I know, it's one of those days, right? So there is a provision right now in the law about the presumption of a property being used as a short-term rental, so that is in there as Section 255.2. I think she has some suggestions to that section, which are great, so I'll take those, but also I think I will look further into that right-of-entry issue that you just raised. I totally still dislike Natalie, came up the great.
I had, you know what, I had that page flipped, because I know the comment on that. You want, want to go to Natalie, and then we'll keep kicking it around?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so the first suggestion that we had was an amendment to the definition of an STR, and basically, our suggestion was to indicate that any or all portions of a single-family dwelling, and then it goes on to read rented for compensation and exchange, et cetera, et cetera. And basically, that was just to capture the fact that sometimes you'll see a B and B where it's just one room that's being rented versus the whole house, so just to kind of indicate that there are different circumstances for rentals like this. Also, in line with our comment seven, we've recommended that the board consider whether the application should include a statement regarding what portions or if all of the dwelling will be used as a short-term rental. And I think that the two of those together, you know, kind of make that cohesive. And also, again, number seven would be a submission by the applicant for a B and B, they would have to indicate that as part of their statement.
Could we, as part of the application process, require them to provide an interior drawing of all floors?
I think that's already required. Yeah, I think that there's floor plans that are required, and that's part, so under, on page three, an accurate suitable floor plan for each level of the dwelling that can be occupied, and then it goes on to describe the sta, the scale of the drawing.
Right, okay.
That it doesn't need to be a professional, and then indicates all the floors. So I think that's already in there, which is good. We've also recommended as part of our comments, and it's number eight here, that basically those plans be determined suitable by Mike, you know, so it says, as determined by your village code enforcement officer, an accurate suitable, and then we also added a plot plan. And the reason that I did that was because on page three, number 6A indicates the location of buildings and required parking, which wouldn't be reflected on floor plans that are already being requested, so a plot plan should be provided essentially to provide that information for his review. So, I guess I'll, I'll stay on eight for a second, so, again, the language that we're suggesting, suggesting is as determined by your village code enforcement officer, an accurate suitable plot plan of property and floor plan for each level, and then it goes on as it reads in the code, or in the law as it's presented. And then basically, we're saying to strike where it indicates specifically the floor plans, so that it encompasses the plot plan that's being requested, so the plans do not need to be prepared by a professional. And again, we're just recommending the rest of the language stay the same.
I'm okay with Natalie's comments for that stuff.
I am also.
The next, so I'll go back to number two in our letter. We just, it, I actually looked or searched for other codes that have rental property laws in them as well, and I saw that this is a common theme, this 31-day threshold. Although, I'm not really sure why, so I figured I'd ask Kelly if she could provide some light on that. You know, and essentially, we kind of go back and discuss, or the second part of that comment indicates that there, it may be that the threshold is intended to prevent an STR for more than 31 days by one single tenant, or maybe it means 31 days back-to-back by multiple users, such that the person could rent it out four weeks consecutively, but then they have to have an off week. I don't know. That's my question. Yeah, I, I'd actually have to go back to see why I put that in, but just thinking about it now, I'm thinking of if somebody does rent their property and they end that lease, usually it continues on a month-to-month tenancy, so that is a thirty, 31 days. I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Yeah, like, when does an STR turn into an LTR?
Yeah, is it based on that 31, maybe? That 32nd day, right then, obviously. I don't know, I, I would have to look at why I, I just, I.
No, it makes a good point, right? If I, if I rent it for 30 days and I leave for a day, right, I end my reservation, I go out and I come back on the next, and I have a break in between.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure actually that renting property like that is really what this law is intended to, to enforce. If somebody's saying, I think what the board's real problem was, people coming and going all the time, different people coming and going, never really knowing who your neighbors are, so if you're then renting it for a month at a time, you know, as a month-to-month tenant, something like that, I think that's a little bit different. But again, I, I will look to see if I have any notes on my laptop.
So what about if a corporate business rented, rented the home for a month, but they had different people flying in and out all the time? So you'd have a constant. So you'd have a constant flow of new people in and out of that building. I'm also trying to find, I'm trying to prevent there being a possible.
No, that's a really good, that's a really good suggestion. Like have it be a corporate retreat house or something like that.
Right, because my, where I used to work, they would do that. They would rent, they would have like a corporate place they would rent. And then as people came in, they would, oh, you can stay there. And so there'd be six of us there one week, and then one person there next week, and it'd be a different person.
But it's all one lease because corporates leasing it.
Right, but the people, the people are going.
Yeah, people change it.
I'm just trying to like, someone buys it in an LLC, or there's something like silly like that to try to get around it.
Is that really what, I wish to say this politically correct, is that what they're gearing the war towards, is the corporate?
Got to kind of cast, you got, the nets got to cast everybody. You gotta.
Yeah, I mean, it does, right now, it appears that it might permit that. So let me, let me take a look at what the reasoning was. And I can, I can in a report on your behalf to the board say that this was raised. And then I can have the ability to do some additional research and let the board know what that 31 days came from.
Okay.
Because I just, I just don't remember tonight. I really don't.
The renters are considered as visitors, some of his residents.
Correct.
That could have an impact on the parks. And coming back to the floor plan question, should it be noted where utilities like natural gas, propane, electric shut off so that emergency services can close power?
Depends. Yeah, right now, it just says, you know, including bedrooms, windows, exits, and any heating and cooling units on the floor plans.
Yeah, so I mean, it wouldn't kill them if they have to mark the main water shut off, air shut off, and.
Well, Kelly's not in random on the six. An accurate suitable floor plan for each level, and then B, basement location of housing utilities.
Yeah, for.
Oh, for the plot plan.
For the outside.
Oh, okay.
They can go shut off the propane or the natural gas from the outside before you go in. So if there is a problem with it, an electric fault or a gas leak.
I thought you, I thought you meant interior walls.
So that, one of our comments was suggested that a plot plan be provided. And essentially, I think what you're saying is that that level of detail should be included on that plan.
Right.
Utility shut offs.
I have an issue with the parking because, right, I mean, right now, you're, you're suggesting a plot plan, which I agree with. It says, obviously says location of building and required parking. But the zoning only requires like two stalls per residential unit. And you might have 12 people here, so it should be more adequate.
Yeah, I think actually there is a section in this law that discusses what adequate parking would be. And here it is, on page four, number 10.
Yep.
The property must have a minimum of one off-road parking space for every bedroom shown on the floor plan included with the application. So it, I don't think, to your point Evan, I don't think that the code, you know, really adequately addresses something like this until it's stated within this law.
But the bedrooms could have multiple beds in them too.
Right, so we also, when we're talking about the septic system later on, one of our comments suggests that for the purpose of this law, one bedroom would be considered to occupy two people type of thing. Let me see if that's true.
That's right, actually underneath that, number 12.
Yeah.
Well, we also have your traffic council in here, so maybe fill it off the cuff. Or if you want to think about it. But basically, so I think where your code would say like one parking, or two parking stalls per residential family, this is now requiring if there's four bedrooms, it would be four spaces. If it's five bedrooms, it would be five spaces, et cetera. Which.
That's, that would be the typical way of doing it per bed.
Yeah, okay.
But it doesn't, I guess it doesn't really address the maximum occupant, although there's a, yeah, occupants if 12 people. Like at any given point, you might, you know, whatever, you might have 12 cars over there.
Well, it's also saying on page 5D, all applicants, permanent holders must have a rental contract which includes maximum onsite parking provided.
Yeah, and I think that maximum onsite parking would just be determined then by bedroom. So then to Evan's point, there could be overflow parking unless the law prohibits more than the permitted number of cars. You know, so basically, if there's four bedrooms and four available spaces as demonstrated by the plot plan, no more than four cars would be allowed onsite.
Exactly, that's what they're signing the contract to, as far as the rental agreement.
So would the.
I mean, from a practical standpoint, enforcement of that would be pretty difficult. Like, you know, a fifth car can squeeze in the driveway. Are we going to have the building inspector go out and count cars? Or is this like a, a bachelorette party where everybody shows up in their own car? And there's 14 cars there and who cares? Well, then yes, somebody's going to come and do something, so.
So with cars and bedroom count, so 255.5A2. Property must comply and meet with all current New York State Uniform Building Codes, including all requirements for rental blah, 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 and zoning code. So I know the New York State Uniform Building Code defines what a bedroom is. But maybe I missed it. What if I converted a room and made it a bedroom? Like I did it on my own, I didn't get a permit for it. I, where do we, what are we basing the bedroom count on? Are we basing it on the plans that are filed at the building department? Are we basing it on what the tax assessor office says?
It would be what the building department does because that's who's going to be issuing the permits. So whatever goes in, he's going to review it on that.
Do we just want to make sure we put that in here, that that's part of the review process? That the bedroom count has to match what's on file with the building department?
Yes, because you said so much of the, I mean, they could just file the eight and a half by 11 sort of plans that has every room, its closet as a.
Right, well, it's a closet really that makes a bedroom, right Evan? I think it's, it's a size, it's the, it's the square footage, the height, and then I think it's a closet too, right?
Yeah, like air and other things.
Yeah, so you could potentially turn a bonus room into another bedroom. So I want to make sure whoever's reviewing this, that's, that's going to get picked up on. That you're right, they didn't submit my drawings, here are my drawings, here are my six bedrooms. I want to have a six-bedroom Airbnb. But part of the review process should be that they should only be allowed to be permitted for what is on file in the building department. That's a very long-winded comment.
I wrote it.
Okay, sorry about that. Not that anybody would be unscrupulous. I'll, not here. Sorry, now, we keep cutting you off, I'm sorry now.
No, it's okay, I mean, it's a good discussion, right? So, but kind of going back to the parking issue and not to like beat a dead horse or whatever the right saying is, or beat a.
Beat a.
Yeah, I don't know. Kelly, you mentioned like the enforcement part of it. Is this going to be sub, like obviously, somebody could file a complaint with the building department and then they could perform an inspection and determine, hey, there were only supposed to be four cars onsite, there's five. You know, and investigate that complaint, is that part of this as well?
Yes.
But again, does that go back to the building inspector has to witness the violation in order to enforce it?
So that is all covered in 255.8A and B. And violations of this chapter or of any short-term rental permit issued pursuant to this chapter shall be subject to enforcement and penalties that are prescribed therein. And it's whether he witnesses it or he receives a written complaint. He has to record the complaint, investigate it, and issue a report. So he has to make sure that it's, you know, a founded complaint.
I have questions about the penalties too, but I guess we'll come back when we, we get there. Because it's, there's not a lot of bone meat to the fat. And I was curious if I could change, okay, sorry, we're all over the place, Natalie.
Are we okay on parking though? We'll move on then, you think Evan and everybody, questions raised?
I just, I'd hate to see them have to like, I, I get the problem with like the bedroom count, but then I also hate to see him have to pave over half the front of the lot in order to.
You know, I, I just don't know how to get away from the issue where, yeah, there, there could be 12 cars not blocking the driveway is filling up the street.
No, you know what, this, could.
I think street would be more of a problem.
If, if parking is allowed on the street, you, you're not going to be able to stop them from parking on the street. If it's allowed.
You know, that's, that's, so coastal communities, right? A lot of rental houses down there. What do they do, or what do they use to determine?
How many people park there?
How many parking spots that they need for those homes, right? Because you go to the Jersey Shore, you go to the Carolinas, you go to Virginia, you get those 10, 12, 15-bedroom houses. And they've got to have ample parking for those.
What kind of Airbnbs are you expecting here, Chris?
Well, again, I went, I went high on the bedroom count, but.
Okay.
So I guess like from the other perspective, right? Airbnbs that we've rented or our families have, when you go, they specify you can only have three cars. And that's like in the agreement with the rental, yeah, so.
But defines a car.
What is it? Oh, yeah. Motorcycles, bicycles.
That I, I did rent an Airbnb with a bunch of friends for a bachelorette party, Kewa Lake, great house, great place. They told us exactly how many cars we could have, that there was no off-street parking. And there, there were like penalties if we violated that. So, you know, you got to share a car with somebody if you're doing something like that. And a lot of the places around here for the short-term rentals, I think too, would be families, which generally share cars. But who knows? Obviously, it could be rented out for a corporate retreat, a bachelorette party in Woodbury, whatever you want.
But it's also being spelt out in the rental agreement of how many parking spaces they have.
Yeah.
So what would happen, I think, at that point, right, is somebody would come in or apply to the building department for a short-term rental property. The code is going to say you need to have one off-street parking space per bedroom. And then the applicant has to demonstrate that their property has that essentially to proceed that way. And then the renter would be required or, you know, maybe not required, but it would be their obligation to enforce that with their leases, if you would. I think that's how it would work.
Yep.
So should the law specify that that has to be in the agreement?
Yeah, actually, I think if you, if we, it says that they cannot block any, block or otherwise impede ingress or egress over the street on which they're located and/or to and from any driveways of any other property.
Right.
If you'd like, under that subsection 3E, we can also include that the contract has to specify, you know, that they're limited to the number of cars that they can have for a parking space. Or however, sorry, I mixed those words up, but you know what I mean.
Yeah, they, they could also want a D2.
D2, right, yeah, it says maximum onsite parking provided, so I think it's already there, right?
Yep.
I have one question. If, so if you have, let's say, a 60-foot wide, are you, are you limited? Like if you don't have the required on, off-street parking, can you, would you be denied a permit?
Yeah, you would only be able to rent out what you can actually comply with.
So if I had like a five-bedroom unit and like 60 feet of front, clearly, like, does it have to stay on the off-street parking and stay in the front of your property line?
No, if you, if you, if, if, there are streets in Woodbury where on-street parking is permitted. So if you're permitted to do that, that's really open to the public, that's not a private. But if parking is prohibited on the street, people do it anyway, we all know it, we all do it. That's something that's a problem and the police become, ticket, tow, whatever. But you can't stop them from parking on the street if they're privileged.
Chris was joking a little bit about what's a car, but does the parking include trailers or RVs?
I mean, if it's, it, I, I would actually probably defer that one to the building inspector. Because if they're going to show up and they're going to take up, the reparking spot.
Yeah, you got a 30-foot camper.
Then they are not providing adequate parking for the vehicles that are provided. I would, I would leave that in anything. I don't know that you would be able to really spell that out.
Well, can it be spelt out that no campers, trailers?
Some people may be renting it to bring a jet ski to Greenwood Lake, something like that.
Motorcycle?
Motorcycle, yeah. So I just don't know that, I, I think that that you might want to leave in his discretion. But if you want me to suggest something in the report to the board, I certainly can.
Maybe not so much trailers, but like campers.
It could be something like if a camper or trailer is onsite, that would be considered a car for the purposes of this law type of thing. You know, if you, if you thought that that was appropriate. But I, I think to Kelly's point, if, you know, if these are approved and there are repeated violations or reported issues, you know, then it would be something that might could.
Enforcement issue.
Yeah. So then, moving on to my comment number three, it discusses.
Of 20.
Sorry about that. I think actually a lot of these are just like typographical or like suggestions for consistency. So for, for example, number three, the definition discusses month-to-month tenancies. So we just note that that's not discussed elsewhere in the code. So we're recommending that that either be removed or defined if needed.
That is where the 31 days came from. See, I knew it, I knew it was there.
Yeah, it was more like, are the 31 days supposed to restrict just one user? Or is it 31 days where the property can be rented at all type of thing? That was my question. You know, like, so is it one leasie can't extend past 31 days? Or is the renter obligated to take a break from renting at the end of 31 days type of thing?
I think it was, if somebody's going to rent it for longer than 31 days, then they are not subject to this law, they are subject to other laws.
Okay, got it. So is, if the board's okay with number three, and if Kelly thinks that's as appropriate, we're just recommending month-to-month be removed? Or defined, correct?
Are you saying, are we okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
It's okay. And then under presumption of a dwelling unit, this is what the board was discussing earlier about, well, actually, that's the second part of it. So I said, we recommend unit be removed from the title of this section since the standards, and then it references that section, indicate only single-family dwellings are permitted for STR. So units where it would be multiple or apartments and things like that are struck in from the record, if you will. The next one, again, understanding that rentals are limited to the 31 days or less by the definition, the language in the presumption criteria seems to indicate that the period applies to the listing and/or advertisement, which is what you were discussing before. And then I said, perhaps it is appropriate to remove the time limit such that any property listed on an STR website is presumed an STR. And I defer to counsel's opinion on the language for that. So what I, what, so where it is, is in here, under 255.2 on page one. It says, the presence of the following shall create a presumption that all or part of a property is being used as a short-term rental. And then it goes on to indicate all or part of a property is offered for lease on the short-term rental website. You know, and then lists what they could be for a rental period of less than 31 days. So I think that what this is, I thought that what this was saying is that if it's advertised for 31 days.
No, it was if the rental period, so if you're renting it, it's that month-to-month tenancy again.
Okay.
So it can be advertised for five days, you know, it can be advertised for a day. And that'll come up, and he'll have to investigate that. Now, somebody may have advertised their property as a short-term rental by mistake. Whatever mistakes happen, right? And then they take it down, but you know, Chris, you go into the office and you say, I saw this and I want it investigated. He's going to have to report it as a complaint, and he's going to have to investigate it. And if people can, you know, explain how it happened, you know, oh, my nephew did it, oh, but we're, no, we're not renting, whatever it may be. But yeah, so that would meant to be for a rental period, the rental period itself of less than 31 days. So it might be some punctuation, so I'll take both of that.
Okay, or it may be, you know, if you just take that for a rental period of less than 31 days and then just defer to the definition, and maybe that clarifies it too. But I, again, I defer to you. The next one, required permit. I say, where this section discusses renewals required and transfer of property, we recommend you discuss with the building department and develop a method for tracking approved STRs and their renewal dates. So that's more of an ongoing housekeeping item. And just to kind of get Mike and Maria on board with how these would be tracked and maintained.
Hey Natalie?
Sure.
I'm just curious.
I'm just curious, in the document that was submitted to us, it says they're recommending two years for a special permit. Most of the planning board items, special permits are one year, so I'm just curious why they would go to two-year versus standard one-year.
Where are you seeing? Which page, though, Rich? Do you see it?
Yeah, it's in 553 Subsection C.
Okay. Oh, right, yeah.
If that's what they want to do, fine, but no special permits are one-year, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I tend to-
Yeah, mother and daughters are one-year, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Should be consistent.
Yeah, exactly, that's the word.
It's getting late, that's why. Everybody's brains starting to go, "Ooh."
No, I think the difference is, and I was trying to do a scan for it, is that this is a permit, not a special permit.
Right, but it's a special permit that has to be renewed every two years.
Yeah. No, 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 it's not a special permit, it's a permit.
It has to be renewed every two years.
Yeah.
But I think for consistency, if the building department is used to having these permits come up every year, whether it's a special permit or a non-special permit, or not-so-special permit, consistency would be every, they should come up every year. I think the longer you let things go, the longer the chances there are for abuse or for things to fall through the cracks.
I like the phrase for consistency.
Me, too.
Don't ask me to spell it. Consis-, yep.
Okay, so we already talked about seven and eight on my memo, so on the next page, number nine, it kind of follows seven and eight and just inserts plot plan on 255-4B, which is on page three. And again, just to keep that consistent, that a floor plan and plot plan would be provided. Number, yeah, right, so number 10 discusses sleeping capacity. You know, where other sections of the law discuss maximum occupancy and capacity, so we've recommended that be revised for consistency. On 11, the code does not, this section on short-term rental standards mentions three-family dwellings, which are not permitted elsewhere in your code, so we've recommended that that be removed. Number 12 may require a little bit more discussion. We're suggesting on 255-5A11, which is page four, where it reads, "Maximum occupancy for each short-term rental unit shall not exceed what is permitted by all current New York State Uniform Building Codes, and in no case shall the maximum occupancy of a short-term rental exceed 12 people, including permanent residents and renters." So, we're suggesting that you consider whether or not visitors also be specified to keep it at 12 occupants at all times. And also, I don't know if the board wants to allow parties at these locations, or bachelor parties, or things like that, so... And I don't know exactly how you enforce, I guess it would be parties of less than 12 could be permitted, but parties of more than 12 wouldn't be, but it may be worth indicating-
No intergalactic keggers?
For a kegger, they would be subject to the noises and all that good neighbor section. I'm, I'm, I can include the comment if you want the comment included, or anything like that, but my concern is if somebody rents an Airbnb for their family of 11, okay, they've got a big family, family of 11, and they purposely do it in this one place because they have friends that actually live three houses down, so they have them over for a barbecue, so everybody can get together for a barbecue. Now, you're saying that they can't do that. Those people aren't going to sleep over, they're going to walk down the street. You're going to have a really hard time saying, I'll say this, the Board of Trustees had, just did the event venue law, and there was a lot of discussion, and this, as this board knows, and with this board as well, about regulating sizes and parties, and is it a party, or is it just a gathering? Is it, you know, just a couple of friends having tea, it's...
So, how about like 12 overnight, no, no more than 12 overnight guests?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's what it says now, is no more than 12 overnight guests, or renters. I think maybe it's a, this is saying that, I think, that maybe visitors, you're limited at 12. You can't have any visitors to the property on top of that, you know, regardless of whether or not they're walking, so they already comply with the, because they live three houses down, they're complying with the parking, they're complying with everything. But by changing it like this, you would say that they couldn't have people stop by and say hi.
But also, the previous law you're talking about, that was more for people that own the property, to be able to have a party.
To be able to hold events.
Renting, and hey, I want to throw a party and rent this house.
But I think part of the concern, too, would be, why are you saying that these units, these dwellings, cannot hold a barbecue with 13 people when the exact same house lives next door can have a graduation party? That complies with the rest of the provisions in the Village Code. It's just a really fine line, and I'm not sure what the distinction is that the board's trying to make, really.
It doesn't matter about ownership?
Well, yeah, because I think in some ways, right, like, I've, again, just in my experience with certain BnBs, and say, I wanted to rent one, the property owner would say, "No, you can't have a party here because we're worried about, you know, damages to our property," or, you know, "The septic system can't handle it," or, you know, things like that. And then, the other thing, I guess, really more, it's like an enforcement issue, right? So, it would be up to the renter to enforce that on top of the building department, I guess.
Yeah, and there is the part, like I said, where it says, "They're requested to observe quiet hours. They can't engage in any conduct that violates the noise chapter of the code, otherwise constitutes disorderly conduct or creation of public nuisance." And honestly, it doesn't matter how many people you have at a property, you could have grief, and you could have a big blowout, and it's just a neighbor. So, I just, I want to make sure that if there's a specific concern of the board regarding that, that it's a direct and inappropriate, right? And I'm not sure prohibiting parties or events is really what you're necessarily trying to do.
Right, no, I think-
And if there is something that I'm missing, let me know in the chat.
No, I think what the Village Board's intention is to just regulate overnight, overnight, yeah.
Number 13 discusses overnight capacity, so I guess we're going to keep that, then, or overnight occupancy, because that is what we're, that's the point, rather than like maximum occupancy. So, maybe where I'm kind of suggesting a switch from occup-, overnight occupancy to maximum, it should be that maximum should actually indicate overnight occupancy.
Right, I think that's what we're looking, that overnight, you don't want more than 12 people in the house.
Okay. And then I kind of go on in this section to discuss that septic system issue that I was talking about. So, this part of the law, A12, "In the event that the property has a septic system, the maximum occupancy shall be defined by the capabilities of the septic system, but in no event shall overnight occupancy for any short-term rental exceed 12 people in total." So, septic systems and the design of those are based on bedrooms. So, this, where it's 12 people in total, doesn't really translate to that unless you define that. So, what I had suggested is that, for the purposes of this law, you can indicate an assumption that for the purposes of a septic system design under this section, two persons per bedroom are used. And then that way, you know, there's a way to actually calculate what the septic system should have.
Yeah, have capacity.
Yeah.
Okay. Phil, if you want to take off, you can, I know this is riveting to you.
I just finished review of the shared parking on Woodbury.
All right, cool. Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil. I'm sure he doesn't, he's like, "I can't take a second of this."
I had quite a time to review that.
Have a good night, Phil.
Good night, it's good to see you.
The second part, or number 14, discusses, or the law actually requires an inspection report of the septic system. So, there is another part of this law that discusses the adequacy of the water supply, and that's number 15 on page five. So, we're suggesting that maybe there should be, what proof are you going to provide to demonstrate that it is adequate? So, I kind of say, "In this case, property served by municipal or private water supply company would be assumed acceptable. However, for individual well supply owners, they may need to be, maybe it would be appropriate to ask them to submit proof of water quality testing meeting standards for individual water supply wells, and that's set forth in standards by the Department of Health." So, again, this is not really a capacity thing as much as it is a quality thing.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
I mean, you want to make sure that they're not using water that isn't there, or overflowing the septic, and now you're a neighbor.
Yeah, with the septic septic rolling out into your front lawn, yeah. No, that's good.
Would there be a mechanism for bringing in bottled water if they needed it? Like, does that give them?
Yeah, so I think once you get those quality testing results back, you know, then essentially, if it's not adequate, the homeowner would be required to supply bottled water, I would think, in that instance. I don't know how you want to spell that out in the law for Mike, or leave it up to his discretion type of thing. Or actually, I guess if they don't have adequate water quality, then this is saying that you can't-
You can't have it. You got to have good water quality and quantity, and-
Right, yeah.
Otherwise, you're-
Yeah, you can't turn off the water, you know, to prevent somebody from using it type of thing. All right.
No signs. 15, I think we should make easy, they don't need a sign.
Yeah, there was a standard that allowed signs, but I think it doesn't-
There's no reason. There's no reason. Might draw more attention to it than we need.
Okay, number 16. Oh, see, that was in yellow, because the board wasn't sure about that. No, it's in yellow, not white, I believe.
Right, where's, mine's in black and white.
I did notice like a box around certain things, though, so it was like, I don't know if that's, okay. So, then on number comments, or comment 16 that we had, there is a noise restriction and a time limit for the same, so we're just suggesting whether or not outdoor lighting should be considered with that as well. Again, it's like a little funny, because if it's a home that has a light on their porch, you know, maybe that would be acceptable, but, you know, you can't have strings of lights lighting up the backyard or something like that, I don't know.
I have strings of light in my backyard.
Well, I know, and maybe, I think it's kind of pretty, too, but I mean, for the purposes of like creating a nuisance, I don't know, it's up to you guys. That's just something to consider.
I mean, the noise audience, from what I understand, is almost unenforceable anyway because of how it's written, so... I'm sorry.
What we experienced the other night.
I mean, lighting, I mean, what, they should just, normal lighting for resident, enough, I mean, can you just, like, normal lighting for a residential building?
Yeah, because I don't think lighting is really discussed in here, so maybe something is appropriate.
Just, yeah.
But not necessarily to restrict the time limit.
No, just you can't have like stadium lights in your backyard that I could do surgery under, like, something like that type of deal.
Right.
Yeah, like, some people with a rental do like those huge floodlights.
Yeah, no, I mean, if you want to have string lights, you know, cool Christmas lights, yeah, but-
But maybe, so I put, "Normal lighting for a residential building, the lighting specs to be provided is a building sector."
Yeah, let Mike, or the building-
Night sky friendly.
LED, yeah, night sky, dark, dark sky.
No off-site glare.
No off-site glare.
There's a section that you could just pull that out of, I know of. I know someone that wrote that, too.
Number 17 was a minor typo, 18, this gets into the violations and the penalties, and, you know, again, I kind of defer to Kelly on this type of thing, but we suggested potentially, maybe you want to put something in there as on a first violation, then a warning would be appropriate versus an automatic penalty or fine, something to consider.
I, this is where I have two views on this. One, I think there should be two, and I know you have, you know, hazard to health lights shall be punishable by the same fine as above, and well as imprisoned for a period not to exceed six months per violation. Personally, if it's a life and safety issue, and you're using these, and it's basically being used as a commercial business, because you're making money off it. To me, it needs to have a lot more teeth, or else people aren't going to, aren't going to abide by it. So, to me, a fine not exceeding $5,000 for each and every offense, each, each and every life safety offense, the imposed, imposition of this penalty shown, I'm sorry, let me go back. No, 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 I wrote this my own. Okay, so, violation of any provision of this article, or failing to comply with any, any order or regulation made there shall upon conviction by guilt, by guilty of a mis-, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor, punishable by a fine not exceeding $5,000 for each and every offense, every 15 consecutive days would constitute a new offense. I think, in order for people to be serious and make sure that the life and safety issues are met in these buildings, that a $700 fine is really nothing. Until you hit them in the pocketbook, they're not going to take it seriously. So, to me, personally, it should be a $5,000 fine, and it should be a misdemeanor conviction if it's a life safety issue.
So, just two little things. So, that, that condition, if you want that in there, or that provision, if you want that in there, would have to be modified slightly, because there's different levels of criminal offenses, offense, violation, misdemeanor, and used in a little interchangeably, so that part, I-
Well, that's why you're the lawyer, and I'm not.
So, if you saw, when I brought it up, that it should just be consistent with what would be appropriate. The second thing is, so, you would be saying that if somebody who installed a brand-new smoke detector, and I actually just saw this happen, so that's why I raised this as an example, they had smoke detectors throughout the house, but in one location, they actually forgot to pull out that little tab to activate the battery, even though it was up and, you know, working, so that's a violation.
Well, because during the initial inspection of the STR, they would all be worked and be, they would be all worked and in deeming order, in order.
Yeah, it was, it worked, but because the backup of the battery, because it was larger than the house, the backup of the battery, they didn't pull out the tab to activate the battery part?
But I think the building inspector would use his due regard to-
Please, we agree, I'm just giving you like the dramatic example.
I, I understand, but how do you, how do you?
But at the same time, you could have somebody with wires in the ceiling that, you know, don't have any covering on it, and that would obviously spark a fire.
I mean, I hate to say, we had an example in Monroe a few weeks ago, where a family perished. We had an example in Rockland County where five people just died, and both fires, there were non-working smoke detectors in the buildings. So, you know, telling me you're going to get a $750 fine, if this is my business, that's a week's worth, that's a week's of business to me. Telling me you're going to hit me with a $5,000 fine and charge me with a misdemeanor, and possibly put me in jail for a year? That's a completely different story.
If the board is offended, I'm going to ask you to send it to me, so that I can also look at the level of the fines. I'm going to type down everything that you just said, I said, "Get regulations."
No, but, and I'm not talking about nuisance by, no, broken light, I'm not talking about that. This is a life safety, if it's a violation of the fire code, then it's a big deal. It's a safety hazard, especially in these buildings we know are going to be more than occupied than a normal dwelling. That's all I'm suggesting. Okay, I'll type it up and send it.
That should also go into number two, then, that there are going to be a civil penalty of not more than $100.
Right. You just, you got to make them have teeth. You want to do business, fine, but you're going to pay the price if you-
Hey, it's their business, right?
Yeah.
It's a rental.
Can't put a price on a life. All right, I get worked up over things like that for too many reasons.
That's good, that's, good, feedback.
No, it's good.
Good.
Well, I don't know if anybody wants to have a first violation warning or not, but that was that suggestion.
Should it be, I mean, it really should be any different than the current, you know, depending on the level of the violation, Mike gives you 30 or 15 days to fix it. If you don't fix it, then you pay the piper. Depending on, you know, property maintenance, I think, is 30 days, and some of the stuff is either seven or 14 days, depending on what it is, you know. So, I think whatever, it should all be consistent, we should-
So, there is a systemic notice requirement as part of the building codes that, you know, specific language that needs to be in there and everything, you want that same sort of notice provision here?
Yeah.
It would be a shorter period of time to cure, obviously, because of the nature of it, yeah. So, I can, does the board want that? I can put that in here, so that there is a notice and to cure, and if not, just slap them with the pipe.
Do they have to cease their operation during that period?
They, they should, however, technically, some continue in the acts because they are trying to cure it at the same time. So, you have a renter there, and they're trying to make some improvements at the same time, so... I don't have a good example.
I know, can you, if it's, again, we go back, if it's a life safety issue, that the-
I think differently.
Can the, a permit be revoked until, part of the penalty be that the operations permit is revoked until said violation is- you know, corrected to the satisfaction of the building, the code enforcement officer?
Grounds for, two fifty-five ten, ground for suspension or renovation. Public nuisance, violate penal code, violation of any provision of Woodbury's code, don't comply with any thing in this chapter. I can include the provisions of the Code of Woodbury, and the Code of Woodbury incorporates by reference. So it would incorporate the building code, the plumbing code, the fire code, all of that.
Yeah.
But I can also say, including nothing else.
In case someone decides to get cute when they fight it.
While you're on two fifty-five-ten, you have owners violate any provision of the penal code of New York State. What about renters that are using it for illegal purposes?
Well, first, it depends on what those illegal purposes are because the police would be involved, so. I don't really, it would be the ultimate responsibility to basically vet the people that are using the property.
Now, I own the property, but I keep renting it out to meth labs. They're renters.
You do that in your trunk now?
Well, listen, yeah, I need a property to do it. Let's show, yeah, I mean, you know, it's not me doing it, it's my renters that are doing it.
That may qualify under E for conduct on the premises that disturbs the health, safety, peace, or comfort of, or which otherwise creates a public nuisance. I mean, is crystal meth a public nuisance? Apparently it's not, I mean.
Apparently it's not.
But I think that that would potentially disturb the safety and the comfort of the property.
Well, can something be added in there or in violation of New York State penal code?
In E as well, I mean.
Yes.
And even though they revoke the permit, how does he force them out?
Well, the renter's only there for a certain amount of time, first of all, but then, so the renter's eventually going to leave. It's whether or not somebody else can go in.
So they're allowed to stay there until they're, so the violation can be there, they can stay there until their rental's done?
No, 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 they should, if it's revoked, they should be out of the house, but in practical, it, it depends, first of all, on why it's revoked.
Right.
I'm going to say that. So if it's something that is like, it's revoked because it could spark a fire in a second, well, first of all, people aren't going to want to stay there, and he's going with a mandate that they leave. This isn't like an eviction proceeding, which can actually take years. I think, we're going to have to see how it plays out to see how that actually works to get people out of the house.
As I say, you know, they, they, they're holding integral act together, he gets the complaint, he finds the complaint is valid. This happens to be one of those people that are renting for thirty days, they're there for day, this is only on day two. So how does he get them out for the other twenty-eight days?
He goes after the owner. Because it basically, the owner's going to want to get rid of these people because this is his business, and if you're going to make me lose my permit, get out, you violated the terms for our contract.
Okay.
From a businessman perspective, that's what I'd do, or businesswoman, whatever. I think that's how they would probably operate, but Mike would have to go hard after the owner.
Yeah.
And if renters are doing something that badly, somebody should call the police in so that that's extra ammunition to form a factor. But let me just, so adding violation of penal code to E and then C.
So my comment number nineteen on penalties, you guys have discussed kind of at length, but I honestly, reading this, not really familiar with a lot of like violations versus civil penalties and whether or not there was a conflict or redundancy here. So again, I just kind of defer to Kelly on that. And then.
The difference there is that the fines are criminal and they're in justice court. The civil fines are typically not from justice court. Justice court can't make somebody do something.
Right.
They can only issue fines. So if there needs to be a civil fine, that would need to be brought in Supreme Court. Very limited justice court, Supreme, very limited justice court civil action.
Learned something today, thank you. And then we also kind of mentioned whether or not this law was intended to go after the owner, or if it could go after renters as well if they were in violation of the code. So that was just something, you know, for everybody to consider.
I think you're going to, you're going to want to go after the owner of the property, the renters.
The renters come and gone.
Got to be in the wind by the time you.
But that's why I said, if there, if there are violations, people should know, and again, from just experience, you're going to want to call the police if there's problems like that, for the documents, for the records, and you get back to the owner. That, well, hey, in my experience, the owner actually sold the property because it was too much of a headache to deal with all of the poor records that they were having, and that all happened once a year.
And then my last comment just talked about whether, well, again, referring to the law for the building department for their comments. And then there are portions of this law that refer owners to the ZBA. So, and I know it's not typical practice to have the ZBA weigh in on these things, but perhaps it could be in this instance.
I think at least refer to the building department and let Mike opine.
Yeah, so it's been, it's been referred to the building department, it's been referred to the fire department, and the owners found a planning department. And those provisions that relate to the zoning board, for the most part, are typical with their normal operations, where if Mike makes a determination and they disagree with it, they can appeal it to the ZBA. And the other part was if they wanted a variance from the sleeping capacity, I was correct, parking capacity or other standards, they must apply to the ZBA and that they could then be reviewed by the zoning boards under the zoning boards provisions in the zoning code and in that zoning regulation.
Like the normal procedure for anybody looking for a variance.
Normal procedure, but it's that this is outside of the zoning code, so we have to specifically refer back to that because otherwise they wouldn't have jurisdiction, so.
Okay.
Rewinding about an hour ago to what Chris said about enforcement, I think a lot of research needs to be looked into that area. And I'll give you an example. If I elect to say this, our bylaws prohibit both GMBs and Airbnb. And about six months ago, on Airbnb, our neighbor found out that the person owning the house across the street advertised the Airbnb. So we fined them, and we had our attorney take up the court. Even though we had pictures and a live video of the vans and people changing, the judge threw out the case because we had no other proof document. Just something to think about. On the second case that we had, it was owned by an LLC that was advertising an Airbnb. And we couldn't get them into court, so we gave a judgment against the owner or the LLC, and we put a lien on the property. And then we went into court to try to win that and lost that as well because it was owned by an LLC. So I don't know if it's any different. I'm just giving you live cases where in this town, both cases were dismissed by the county justice. Just something to think about.
No, that's, that's important. I mean, it's always, obviously, the judge is fair and impartial, but it's good to have them also be familiar with the, the local law when it's going to come before them for the first time.
Would it make sense then they all become civil penalties so they have to go to Supreme Court?
No, I think this gives them the option, so it really would then depend on the situation. But we, I can say from my experience, there was a bed and breakfast and event venue that we represented a municipality against, and they were operating obviously without the necessary permits, and it wasn't permitted, et cetera. And they were an LLC, and the owners that were listed actually, I don't know who they are, but we ended up serving them all. And the judge came down very hard on them, and the whole place has been shut down, they still live. So it, I, I think it does depend on the judge as well and how he reviews the, the papers and the proof and things like that, so. Pay's down like a lawyer, but it's really a case by a paper. And hopefully, I mean, look, we're, it's, you can only try and plan for everything that you think of. So by putting everybody's heads together, we get all the different experiences, all the different ideas, like Rich is saying, I had these two experiences, take them into account. So, because we're not going to be able to plan for it, so we'll see how it plays out, you know, once, if the board adopts it, and then you can make changes to it. But you can only try and guess as to how certain things are. Not guess, plan, plan, but not plan for every eventuality.
Alright.
Try.
Try, yeah.
Think we beat this one up pretty good.
I actually, I use the example when I say we try and plan for every eventuality because I have a municipality and there's zoning codes.
This one should be correct, right?
I hope so.
And we experienced somebody who was sitting in a basement like three levels below ground, and we were like, oh my gosh, is that even a real thing? We never even thought of it, but now I think of that, we can register the business. So, anyway, Chris, I'll draft a letter, I'll find you the opportunity.
Okay, cool. Alright, last item, local law number five, twenty twenty-three, abandonment of applications. I ask council to come up with something. We have a lot of applications that are sitting in limbo. We haven't heard back from them in a very long time. So of course, we have provisions if they have negative, negative escrow to get rid of them, but we have nothing if somebody just never comes back to us again. So this is.
How do you close it out?
This is just how are we going to get rid of this, this crap that just hangs around forever? I summed that up pretty good. Natalie?
Okay, so my memo is pretty concise, too, although my first comment opines on the conciseness of the law, so good job, Kelly. The comment number two, again, just a procedure for tracking the applications approaching abandonment and notifying the applicants of the same. So it's kind of a building department issue, but something that they could weigh in on.
I, I hate to say it, but screw them. If you put an application in, you can't keep track of it, and it's gone a year that you haven't put anything in, you really don't care about it?
Well, no, I think it's more like, how does the board know that it needs to be abandoned?
I think she said, how's the building department?
Okay, I was going to say, I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want us to, the building department know, hey, you haven't, we haven't heard from you in eleven months, like, no, I mean.
Yeah, no, I think it's more, you know, so like Maria or probably Maria would get an application material on such and such date, and then a year from, had passed, and it would be that that year was.
Yeah, she's no action on it, goodbye.
Just how you do it now, you put the little date next to when we got the last.
Yeah.
Packet of them, and that's the date, if someone wants to dispute it, they can dispute it, but we're not calling them and telling them their application, they're going to show up, but they're just, bye-bye.
Yeah.
So I have proposed a change, actually, to the law that kind of addresses that situation already after further review. So where it says, the third line down, after lots of twelve months without reasonable steps having been taken by the applicant to abandon the application, I have then inserted, brought to the attention of the planning board by way of a status report or other similar action. After a lapse of twelve months and prior to the application being discontinued by the board, the board shall advise the applicant in writing that the project will be discontinued within thirty days. And then it continues. That way, there is a notice that you were just doing this, and there's the opportunity for them who may or may not have fallen asleep and forgotten about it, or maybe there was a death, or maybe there was a litigation, and you've seen all of those. But also, they could have an opportunity to update their escrow.
So couldn't we do that at eleven months, notify them that your application's expiring in thirty days?
Couldn't, I didn't hear what you said.
Couldn't we do that at eleven months, instead of letting it go twelve months, then giving them another thirty days? I would say eleven months, hey, listen, in thirty days, your application expires. If we don't have anything in from you by such and such a date, it's going to be considered abandoned.
Yes.
And then be gone.
That way, within the twelve months?
Yep. I don't, I don't want to give them any chance to keep stretching, keep stretching things out.
Did you indicate in there who is responsible for notifying them? Is it, does it say the building department? Okay, so then like Chris would authorize you to prepare a letter to send to them? Okay, okay.
Sounds good.
And then.
Then Dr. Carter.
Yeah. The, kind of along that same lines, number three, you know, again, just maybe it is worth mentioning somewhere else in the code when somebody makes an application to the planning board that, you know, if they don't appear before the board every eleven months or submit something to show that they are active or provide an update, that they risk abandonment type of thing. I'm not sure, does it make sense to?
My, my theory is if you're, if you're, that, your application's in, you're a big boy, big girl, big person, manage it, project management, it's not on us to, you know.
But we're going to let you know after eleven months.
Eleven months, that's your own, first and.
One and only.
One and only warning, eleven months.
Yeah, and I think that's very courteous, actually, even more courteous than what this suggests is like, you know, as part of the application. At the time of the application, they need to know that they risk abandonment if they're not active for eleven or twelve months type of thing, you know what I mean? Does that make sense? Okay.
Just to clarify, Natalie, some applicants come in on the twelfth month and ask for a three or six month extension. So if they don't come back after that, when you say twelve months, is it, how would you address that if they, if we granted a six month extension and then they didn't come back?
That would be normal practice because they haven't, their extension would be.
Relapse.
Well, yeah, and also.
At that extension time, you usually ask for like a status update, if they've provided to them that a status report, that would then be the last time.
But, yeah.
But if nothing's changed to the status, if you deny the.
Well, also, I think that this is, there is no extension for this, really. It's like, once you provide notice and they provide a letter saying, hey, I'm active, or they appear before the board and say, we're still working on things, then automatically that date would be the next renewal for the twelve month period.
Right.
Okay.
And this matches the length of time of building permits, good? About twelve months?
Building, yeah, they're a year now, building permits. It used to be two, they're a year now. What's up, Andy?
This only applies to new applications, not current.
No, this would be.
No, this is going to apply to all of them, however, if there are some that, if this gets adopted, I'll sit down with Chris and Natalie and figure out what is outstanding, what is overdue, and if it's been enough time, get that first letter out. Because some people, again, deaths and family litigation, whatever, just forget, although Chris doesn't like that. I mean, I call him into it like that, it's because you.
I guess I'm heartless.
Yeah, no, hey, you know, it's their money.
Is this all because I asked you the other night for a list of active cases?
No, I, I started this before because I was trying to clean, I got stuff sitting, we've got stuff sitting in it.
That's, that's what I said the other night.
When I first opened it on the board.
I need to purge.
Yeah.
Number four just recommended that deposits also include escrow accounts, or if that's already obvious, then you can just disregard that comment. And then number five, again, this issue comes up sometimes where an application dis, or an applicant disappears, but they're already negative in escrow. And at that point, you know, I know that this law requires them to replenish after the fact, essentially, the board could decide you're abandoned, and then you would say, hey, you got to replenish your escrow, but that doesn't really give them any incentive to do that. So what I'm suggesting here is whether there's another enforcement action or like a lien.
Put a lien on it.
Yeah.
Well, actually, so you can only do that in certain instances, and under certain laws, can you then place a lien on some property? So I would have to look, I know, weird, right? I would have to look to see if that's even a possibility, and being on that end of it, there's a lot of times where the consultants end up eating charges because of that, and they can add up if somebody walks away after a DEIS and we've already.